I'd like to call the meeting here at this time. Uh, do you would please Michelle and Will call?
Evan.
Here.
Caladonia.
Here.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Here.
Groblin.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Llama.
Here.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Here.
North Dinsel. Nande. Austin.
Here.
Portage. Farah.
Yeah.
Springwater.
Here.
West Farah.
York.
Here.
Ian, if you would please introduce for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Um, pleased to announce that today's distinguished veteran for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance is Travis Clark, our own, or I should say our own Travis Clark. Mass Communications Second Class Petty Officer Travis Clark was raised in Linwood and is a graduate of York Central School. He entered active duty in the United States Navy on January 21st, 2003, and served until his honorable discharge on August 20th, 2007. Petty Officer Clark attended basic training at Recruit Training Command, Great Lakes, Illinois. He served as a Navy journalist and later a mass communication specialist after completing Mass Communication A School and Defense Information School at Fort George Meade, Maryland. His duty stations including Naval Support Everett, Washington, where he served as a reporter for the local-based newspaper and a public affairs specialist in United States Naval Support Activity Sudabay on Crete, Greece. There, he served as a base morning radio DJ, afternoon news anchor, video journalist, and created naval spots more commonly known as commercials. He received the enlisted Blue Jacket of the Month Award and was Junior Sailor of the Year at Naval Station Everett. While in Greece, he was awarded the Department of Defense Thomas Jefferson Award for outstanding spot production for work done for the Armed Forces Network Europe. For his military service, his decorations include the National Defense Service Medal, the Global War on Terrorism, the Good Conduct Medal, and the Overseas Service Ribbon. After completing his military service, Travis returned home and earned his bachelor's degree in advertising and public relations at the Rochester Institute of Technology. He worked at a Rochester-based marketing agency for some time, then locally coast professional before coming to the county as the Assistant Public Information Coordinator. Travis is also on the docket today for the promotion to the, uh, regular, I could say full-time, grants and public information coordinator. His hobbies include playing guitar, camping, reading, gardening, and above all, spending time with his most amazing family, uh, who is actually present today. He lives in the town of Lester with his wife Lisa and their children Harper and Talia. Travis, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Travis, for your service in the United States Navy, the Board of Supervisors pleased to present you with a certificate of appreciation. Thank you.
We have the meeting minutes from the 10th of July for your consideration. Does anyone have any changes they wish to bring forward or extend? Here, you may look for a motion, please, Lester.
Second choose.
Thank you, all those in favor. (inaudible) opposed? None here. Here, EDAU, one communication, Michelle.
Receipt of acknowledgement letter regarding Resolution Number 2024-215 from NISAC Executive Director Stephen N. Korten.
Thank you, uh, abstract of claims.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. Are there any concerns or questions on these claims you think can tell me? Here, you may look for a motion, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caladonia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groblin.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Llama.
Hi.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dinsel.
Hi.
Nande. Austin. Portage. Farah.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Farah.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 4147, absent 907, adopted.
Next, uh, privilege of the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I request privilege of the floor for Dana Henry, the 2024 Allerens Stanley Festival.
Thank you, Mr. Ma.
(laughing) Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to come and speak about the festival. Uh, Allerens Park, as I hope most of you know, is a gorgeous county-owned park that we spend a lot of time and effort on making sure it's clean and accessible to all of our county residents. Um, I love the park personally because our building is right on it and I get to take my morning walk on it and my afternoon, uh, lunch walking around the park. Um, and I have often, one, run into people who do not understand what a gorgeous resource we have. They don't, uh, have any idea. I've had people stop and say, wow, this is incredible. And luckily, I've been with the county for nearly eight years now and I've been able to enjoy that for most of that eight years, so, um, I feel very passionate about it. Um, our department spends a lot of time making sure that our folks that come to the park are, uh, in clean facilities, have great trails to walk, and so, uh, three years ago, it was determined that we wanted to get that word out to folks because people don't understand. They, they can rent a pavilion and it doesn't cost anything, which in today's, that's pretty significant. So, um, in that effort, uh, a committee was developed back when and, um, many departments staffed the committee. We put a, uh, request out for folks that want to participate in the committee, and it's, uh, very basic to, we want a fun, family time that promotes the beauty of our park and that, um, is not hitting people up for money selling anything. We don't want vendors there. We would like to just make it a fun, family day. So, when we started, uh, back in May of 20, I don't know how I get my dates all messed up here, May 14th, 2022, um, we had, that was the first year, we had six events and two musical acts, very modest participation. We did advertise it, just didn't get the participation. It's really hard to plan that, those dates because there's a lot of conflicting events going on and we are always mindful of that when we schedule the dates for that. So, uh, it was chilly then, so we decided the next year, well, we'll, we'll push it off till the 20th, and a week later. It teamed the entire day. Literally, it did not let up all day. We had 150 people come because they had been there the year before. So, this year, we decided we were gonna move it to June 1st because get us a little more warm weather, and it was perfect, absolutely perfect weather. And we had, uh, this year, 15 events, uh, four musical acts, and a regis, and we added a registration, uh, process so that I can furnish you fine folks with facts and figures because I know you love them like I do. So, um, we had 559 people register for the event, and I, uh, not everybody came that registered, and not everybody that came did register. Uh, we had them register to make sure that our liability waivers were completed for the race or any events that required a liability waiver. And so, I figure five to 600 people, um, and everybody seemed to have a really good time. Uh, the collaboration on the committee have, was just spectacular. I'm always so honored to be able to work with such fine people. Almost all of our departments were represented there in one way or the other. Uh, it was fantastic to, you know, really beef it up this year and, um, get everybody's input and get a really good diverse, uh, set of ideas of different things that we could do to keep people interested in the, in the festivities and, and to get them to become familiar with what resource that we have to offer. Uh, this year, uh, Cornell Cooperative Extension is always involved with us because we try to pair that up with their event on the upper campus, uh, but the U.S. Corps of, uh, Army Engineers came to us and, uh, I met her down in the park one day, was walking down there and she's like, hey, what do you think about us hooking up together? Because like literally, we're just up the hill. Like you can take the trail, the Allerens Park Trail to the Genesee Valley Trail to their trail, and you can be at the visitor's center in about an hour or so, less than an hour. And, um, I said, geez, that sounds wonderful. So, they participated and had a safety, a water safety training down at our park, at the pavilion for kids and adults, and, um, we've also hooked up with them for shape events. We just had a tour of the Mount Morris Dam, and we're looking at offering a lot more exciting opportunities for all of our employees with that collaboration. So, it's, that's, that's just been marvelous. Uh, we also hooked up with Linda Hopkins at Spring, in Springwater, part Springwater Trails Crew, and, um, I'm, you, you flipped my slide ahead of me, so I'm not really sure who the other one, I gotta just think who it was, hold on, Mount Morris Dam. Thank you, the Gen, oh my God, of all people, the Genesee Valley Council on the Arts. Uh, Morgan Helquist was really went over and above for us this year. Uh, she was able to obtain grant financing for all of our talent that we had come, and, um, her husband, and if you wanna put back to that one, that, yeah, so that's her husband standing next to her daughter. Murray the Squirrel was, uh, actually one of her brainchild's when we had our committee meetings, and, um, Travis did a fantastic job getting the advertising out there for Murray. We wanted to have some, you know, just a draw for people to come, and, um, the kids, according to Sue Laidley, who did our photography for us, she said, I know the advertising worked because the kids were running up, oh, Murray, Murray, so they knew who he was. And, um, they had a fantastic time doing it, and, uh, actually, her two kids swapped off and on because it's mighty warm in that suit. Um, but it, that was a great draw. So, the Genesee Valley Council on the Arts participation was super beneficial to our committee this year and, um, very much appreciated, uh, the Helquist family themselves as well. So, that was fun. And then, uh, Sue, our photographer, works at the Department of Health, she's volunteered with us for a couple of years now doing the photography. She walked eight and a half miles that day. Now, mind you, I transported her too, so that's on top of the transporting back and forth, but she got some fabulous pictures as demonstrated here. Our fishing derby, always a huge success. Our, uh, our race, great success. Uh, the basketball challenge, huge success. They love that basketball challenge. Uh, we added this year the volleyball challenge, um, again, focusing on activities that can be done in the park so that families can come at any time to enjoy the park. Um, other than that, I've had a lot of feedback from, um, volunteers, our volunteers, that said, we had a lot of people come up and tell us, what a great event, what a beautiful park. We had no idea. Mission accomplished, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, ARC Glow provided the bus transportation. Um, they did that this year and last year, it's extremely helpful. Traffic this year would have been absolutely impossible to have people drive down into the park. The first year, we had it, that people could drive down in. Last year, we said no, we got the transportation in place, moved people. There is no way with five to 600 people walking down in our park, you could have had other transportation running through there. So, I very much appreciate ARC's contribution to that, great drivers, and, uh, they were fantastic. And, um, and the good old boys, they've been there every year since we started, so I wanted to especially acknowledge them. Um, you can see, I, I don't wanna repeat all the slides, but you can see where families registered from. So, again, I wanted to try to give you guys information. We, we worked on that as a committee to be able to provide you with some solid numbers to sort of base the success on. So, that's, uh, gives you a little detail of that. Um, and other than that, I, I think I've covered it all, and thank you for the board's support, of course, for our park and for the festival and our county administrator and the deputy county administrator, and, um, I'll take any questions if you have any. Y'all go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. We do have one resolution and, uh, the board is.
Amending a portion of Resolution Number 2024-217 declaring surplus poverty Department of Health and Highway.
Are there any questions on this resolution? Here, you may look for a motion unless I have to bring it forward. Does that make a motion? Thank you, Chris. Thank you, all those in favor. Hi. Here, EDAU, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caladonia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groblin. Lester.
Hi.
Llama.
Hi.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dinsel.
Hi.
Nande. Austin.
Hi.
Portage. Farah.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Farah.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 4147, absent 907, adopted.
We have several resolutions, but it's gonna be put in separate.
Mr. Ma, amend the 2024 Livingston County Budget, Central Services, Department of Health, Mental Health, Public Defender, Sheriff's Office, there are two, and workforce as well.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Ma. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Here, you may look for a motion, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caladonia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groblin.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Llama.
Hi.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dinsel.
Hi.
Nande. Austin.
Hi.
Portage. Farah.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Farah.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 4147, absent 907, adopted. Authorizing transfer funds, Department of Health, there are three.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Ma. Are there any questions or concerns on any of these transfers? Here, you may look for a motion, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caladonia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groblin.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Llama.
Hi.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dinsel.
Hi.
Nande. Austin.
Hi.
Portage. Farah.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Farah.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 4147, absent 907, adopted. Authorizing, a resolution authorizing Livingston County to join the municipal group self-insurance program for purposes of its self-insurance plan for workers' compensation.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Ma. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Here, you may look for a motion, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caladonia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groblin.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Llama.
Hi.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dinsel.
Hi.
Nande. Austin.
Hi.
Portage. Farah.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Farah.
Hi.
York. Eyes 4147, absent 907, adopted. Pointing grants to Public Information Coordinator for the county of Livingston, Travis Ella Art.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Ma. Are there any questions or concerns on this point? Here, you may look for a motion, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caladonia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groblin.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Llama.
Hi.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dinsel.
Hi.
Nande. Austin.
Hi.
Portage. Farah.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Farah.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 4147, absent 907, adopted.
Congratulations, fans, before adjourned, which you were.
Good afternoon, everyone, excuse me. Um, in my writing, I aim to be concise and I employ brevity, so I'll do the same with my remarks and not keep you here too long. Um, I just wanna say thank you to Ian and, uh, the board for your support and confidence, and I look forward to continuing, continuing the work of the Grants and Public Information Office and working with each of you as we promote and share all the fantastic work that's being done here in Livingston County. Um, I also like to recognize my wife Lisa and my daughters Harper and Talia who were here but had a little meltdown, so, (laugh) so they took off. Uh, but I'm, I'm truly honored to accept this position. Thank you very much.
Authorizing a purchase of one 2025 Western Star 49 X Factor X-Set BAP for the Livingston County Highway Department, Tracy Road Equipment.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Ma. Are there any questions or concerns on this purchase? Here, you may look for a motion, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caladonia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groblin.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Llama.
Hi.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dinsel.
Hi.
Nande. Austin.
Hi.
Portage. Farah.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Farah.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 4147, absent 907, adopted. Authorization to submit a grant application to the New York Climate Smart Communities Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Ma. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Here, you may look for a motion, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caladonia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groblin.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Llama.
Hi.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dinsel.
Hi.
Nande. Austin.
Hi.
Portage. Farah.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Farah.
Hi.
York. Eyes 4147, absent 907, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Training and Professional Development Department, Logical Operations Agency.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Ma. Are there any questions or concerns on this conference? Here, you may look for a motion, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caladonia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groblin.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Llama.
Hi.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dinsel.
Hi.
Nande. Austin.
Hi.
Portage. Farah.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Farah.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 4147, absent 907, adopted.
Do you have any updates, uh, this afternoon?
Yeah, a couple of updates. Um, first of all, I wanna thank, um, Dana might have left, but, um, there's certainly some other people here as well that, uh, participated in sort of administering that, sort of like the thank yous at the departmental level, so, um, just do wanna recognize them again for all their efforts, um, Central Services staff, um, Kelly and, and Ryan and certainly a few others that are, Travis, that are in this room that, uh, made that day so special. Um, certainly Mother Nature really helped because hasn't been too kind to us in the past, but, um, it really was a, was an awesome event. You know, the one, the one picture I think that we shared that kinda went viral a little bit of the, the, the young boy who was a refugee, I think, from Afghanistan, as I recall, and had to cut the fish in the pond, so, really cool, cool stories out of that. Um, so, just wanna express my thanks again to that everybody involved. Another, another set of thanks and kudos. Um, last Friday, as you saw, you know, internationally, there was a, uh, a big outage with respect to antivirus software called CrowdStrike, which the state offers to county governments, uh, many of which participate in that. We do, uh, so we were impacted by that. That was an upgrade, uh, or an update that comes basically once a day at the same time, and whatever was in there caused everybody to have a major, major meltdown, uh, in terms of the update and the upgrade. Um, so, we, we have what I would call kind of in-house ITS. I mean, that's, it's a county department that services all the county departments, and they responded moment one to, uh, you know, the impact. They had to do real, you know, triaging as far as, you know, how do, what do we address first, when and why, how do we address it? Um, they had to go like laptop by laptop and desktop by desktop to make the final patches the following probably Monday. Um, but, you know, they, they responded, um, re- really just, you know, just meeting the call, so to speak, of, of the response to that, so just wanna recognize them for that, for that effort. Um, a couple of other things going on, um, the replacement of the Public Safety Training The replacement of the public safety training tower, the burn building, as they call it, is about ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent complete. So that should be done here shortly. So it's a nice kind of one-time, twenty-five-plus-year capital project. The county's funding was a one-time ARPA dollars. So we'll have probably like a ribbon cutting type thing over there when it's done. So that's, that's great. Another event that we're working on is Take Your, Take Your Child to Work Day. That's going to be the first of August across the county. We have, we have signups. We have probably most departments in the county are going to participate in that, have a nice exposure to, you know, the kids to, to what county does. I know when we've had kindergartens and first, second grade in here, sometimes explaining to them what county government does is sometimes a difficult challenge. But when they see mom, dad, or grandpa, grandpa kind of, you know, in action, subject to confidentiality and, and security and things of that nature. We obviously have some departmental staff that can't really do this. But the ones that can, we're, we're looking to do that on the first of August. Travis sent out a couple of notes of late on some grants that are more municipality oriented potentially than county oriented. The first one is that swims grant for the swimming pool thing. I know Nandey at least was kind of looking at that. That's been extended, so that may be something to consider for, for your municipality. The other one was the, the safe rail crossings. You know, that may be something to, you know, look into as well. There's some new dollars available for that, that the county can be a conduit to help out with that grant writing effort. And then lastly, on your desk is the latest report from the sales tax from New York State Tax and Finance. So usually what happens is when quarters are complete, so we're now complete with the second quarter, you're, you're likely going to see some press on this because the comptroller releases quarterly reports. They send it to every local media outlet. So the Daily News, the L C N, usually the Rochester D N C, they do pick up on this and they usually run an article about low region sales tax trends. I don't know what the other low counties are going to be, but we're, we're up nine point five five percent. It, it looks great. In fact, it is great. It's nice for the overall county bottom line. But I always do an asterisk to these numbers because there's, there's opportunities for the state to do adjustments and audits and corrections to these numbers where they kind of can take it away. But if they were not to take it away, my guess would, would be that we would be sitting very, you know, very comfortably in the, sort of the average rankings of all the counties as far as how things are going from a sales tax collection perspective. Because it's nine point five five percent. It's up two percent. It's twenty-one point six versus twenty-three point six million dollars through the second quarter versus where we were last year. So it's a good position to be in as we start the budget process rolling again. Just wanted to update you on that because likely there'll be an article on it. Sometimes it'll say Livingston County leads the way or whatever. And again, it is great. It is true for the moment, but potentially they could take it away. And that's all I have.
Is there any other questions, Mr. Chairman, or the board? Mr. President.
I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person. I have a request that Shannon would stay, Ryan Snyder, Eddin.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Solid, thanks, Mr. Sir.
Thank you, all. Please in favor. All right.